All right, Town Council, regular meetings, September 18th, 2025, 6:00 PM at the Cape Charles Civic Center. Can I get a roll call, please?
Newman present.
Holloway present.
Buckholz present.
Buta present.
Grossman present.
Ashworth present.
Let it be known, we've established a quorum. Please all rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so we will start off with some recognition and presentation this evening. Unfortunately, she will not be able to be here this evening, she had a prior engagement. But this is a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Jody Outland in recognition for 10 years of service to the Municipal Corporation of Cape Charles, September 21st, 2015 through September 21st, 2025.
Yay, Jody!
There you are, sir. Okay, demolition by neglect presentation, and that is getting put on by...
Katie's not here.
Katie's not here, I see that.
So it's in your packet?
Okay.
I have looked at it, have you all had a chance to review it?
I have.
I am willing to take questions and take these questions back to Katie, but we don't have a presenter tonight.
Are there any questions from council? Not hearing any, we will move on to public comments. Is anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Pastor Ricky Rattus.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
All right, glad to be back with you all again. I came like four, five months ago when I first got to town. So now that I've kind of learned a little bit about the town and what's going on, I'm back to again, number one, when I was here last time, there was a concern by another gentleman about sidewalks. Unfortunately, about two weeks ago, we had one of our senior members in her upper eighties who was walking the church, and when she got to the grass area, fell somewhat face forward. So when I pulled up to the church, she was on the ground, it was kind of a scary scene. And I'm not blaming that necessarily because there was, she was an older person who walks with a walker. But if there were sidewalks, I'm assuming it probably would be a much smoother, easier walk for those who are, for everyone, especially for those who are maybe slightly disabled or older. So bringing that back to the forefront again, I don't know if there's been any movement on that since the last time I was here. But if there are areas, especially connected to churches or businesses where people often frequent, it would probably be a good idea, if possible, as soon as possible, to try to get those areas connected to prevent that sort of thing from happening again. Secondly, last time I was here also, talked about housing and affordable housing. I don't know where you all are on that, if anywhere at all on that. But since I've been here, friends, family have come, exposed to the area, like myself, who had never been here before, and are shocked at some of the pricing as it would be to purchase here, not only purchase here, but to vacation here. I know there's not much you as town council can do about what private persons rent their facilities out for, or the hotel. But $700 for a weekend is a little bit expensive. So I don't know if there's plans for any other type of hotel or something that might come into town to give a little more competition where prices won't have to be $700 for a weekend because, you know, I can go to a major city and spend that, if not a little bit less, for two nights hotel stay. So just want to bring that to your attention as well. And the last thing was, again, I think it was, yes, just affordability of housing. I've been making some contacts with those over in rural landing, trying to keep up with them. I don't know if there's any other areas around outside of there that would provide housing for your regular, everyday workmen. I'm not even talking about people, like my wife is a nurse practitioner, I'm a pastor and a business owner, and $700 plus thousand dollars is still a little bit tight for even us with very good income. So I don't know if there's any plans to have something where teachers or those who work at the food line or the Dollar General or wherever they might work outside of three-figure salaries can afford to have a place in town as well. Because I'm hoping that you're looking to be inclusive and not exclusive in that regard where everyone can feel welcome and come here and spend their money and want to spend the weekend but everybody can't afford $700 plus dollars for two nights, and they can't afford $2,000 whatever plus dollars for rent or mortgage. So I don't know if there's any room in what you're planning, but I just want to bring that to your attention. And lastly, I'll close with the apartment complexes out there on the water. I don't know if that has been already planned, I'm assuming it has, there's a plan already in place. I just don't know what that plan is. But I'll be reaching out to try to find out what the plan is for that and any other areas that may be in town where we can kind of try to work together. I think it would be nice maybe to have a town forum, like a, what do you call those?
Town hall?
Town hall.
Town hall, there we go. A town hall type of meeting where citizens can come in, voice their concerns or what have you, and get real answers from you all. Because I hear things in the street, I've only been here a certain amount of time. Like I said, I don't know everything, I don't know everybody. But it would be good to be able to bridge that gap between the citizens, the council, and try to come up with some solutions in the near future. All right, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Pastor, I'd like you to hook up with me with regards to housing.
Okay.
All right, because I also deal with housing outside in the county.
Okay.
All right, so you may not have a solution here in the town, given the prices. And we cannot set prices for short-term rentals. Pre-enterprise that. But I can fill you in on what's happening in big picture relative to housing, affordable housing in our region, county.
Sounds good.
And I'd also, Rick does a wonderful weekly report, manager's report. I would have you two connect because I think there's some things he can update you on that you brought up tonight and bring you up to speed so that, you know, kind of know what's coming forward and you can get on that email list to get that weekly update because there's a lot of good information in it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you so much.
You don't need to, we have, these are very much on the forefront of our minds too. Priorities, and there definitely has been some progress made on pretty much everything you threw out, well, not everything, but most of what you threw out there. Like everyone else, if you ever want to reach out to me, I'd be happy to sit down with you and bring you up to speed and help you understand how to stay more in touch with kind of progress and developments as they happen, but thank you for...
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
I haven't asked to sign up, but I did receive two letters, we received two letters.
Oh, okay.
The first one is from Stuart Gregory. He's with Davenport Financial, and he's talking about the harbor. He was here visiting the harbor. It says, "Good afternoon, this past weekend, our boat club," this was the end of August that we received it, "so our boat club held one of our most popular events of the year, a cruise race to Cape Charles. Our club is Fishing Bay Yacht Club located in Deltaville. This event has taken place for the past 12 or 14 years and it's called the Weed Dram Regatta. Attached is an article from Chesapeake Bay Magazine that was published 10 years ago about the 2015 Weed Dram event. Since then, the group has grown, and this past weekend, we had 25 boats at Cape Charles Town Dock. I'm writing to let you know that we had a fabulous experience. I was charged with organizing the event, and it has been a real pleasure to work with Paula Davis over the past six-plus months. She is very capable, very understanding of our needs, and a real asset to your organization. As you know, Hurricane Erin became a factor in everyone's plans last week, so there were some last-minute changes. Paula handled all of this and was seemingly unfazed. I was particularly impressed and appreciative of the way she handled the situation. The rest of the staff were impressive too, very helpful and very friendly. Over the past several years, the bathhouse at the marina had been somewhat neglected. That is not the case now. The bathroom was clean and appeared to be in good shape. I heard many compliments from our group about the staff in the bathhouse. Bottom line is that we had a fabulous event, and the people at Cape Charles Town Dock were wonderful. They're all wonderful ambassadors for the town of Cape Charles, many thanks." And he is the cruising commander for the Fishing Bay Yacht Club. This one is from Roger Boldman. Says, "Dear Mayor and Council, my wife and I have been coming to Cape Charles for well over 20 years, most recently staying at the North Hampton Hotel. It is a charming town blessed with the beach, a harbor, and the bay. I can't think of any town on the bay so blessed, but maybe Oxford, Maryland. I am writing today to let you know of my dismay at seeing so many vacant tree pits along Mason Avenue. Guess about five. Plus opportunity to plant at least 15 more if you cut some pits in the concrete sidewalk, no big deal. Trees soften the streetscape and improve its ambiance. Also furnish shade to pedestrians and reduce heating/cooling costs for buildings. I would think this would be good for businesses along Mason Avenue, plus small foot traffic. There are also many opportunities to plant street trees in the residential part of town. I have some experience with this subject. For 15 years, I was chairman of the Easton Maryland Tree Board. Our role was to advise the Town Public Works Department in purchasing and siding street trees. It's probably fair to say that we planted a street tree everywhere we could, starting downtown and working out. Most Easton streets are now tree-lined. Here's how it works, Easton has $15,000 in its budget for replacement and new trees. The Tree Board will recommend a plan to Public Works for the year covering the sites and species. The plan, of course, would respect the budget plus any Public Works issues. We had a fall and spring planting. Public Works would purchase the trees, plant them, and water them for two years. We would select the tree based on the site and nearby species, avoid too much of the same species. Most of what we brought, most of what we bought were 15-gallon container trees that cost about $110 each. We got some of them from Tanker Nursery and Exmoor, large, big space, no overhead power lines, such as oaks, medium, small pace, no overhead power lines, or elms, small overhead power lines, red buds. Cape Charles is blessed with white sidewalks and no overhead power lines in the business district, and large tree lawns and no overhead power lines in residential district. This adds up to good street tree planting. Hope this is of interest, sincerely, Roger Boldman."
I have a question. Do we, how do we acknowledge these letters and things? I think both of those, I mean, I think we need to start thinking about how we acknowledge, but in particular, both of those need an acknowledgement, you know, we need a process for that because I think those are helpful information, and they, I want them to know that we heard them and, you know, take into consideration what they've offered.
We'll send a response.
The harbor ones, if I get it, I'd send back a response.
Right, yeah.
And then also one to Paula.
Yeah.
If I get it.
I just think we need to make sure we're, it's automatic, like there's some system that's happening to acknowledge for people's taking the time. Both of those were extensive information, thank you.
Is that it for the comments this evening?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, can I get approval of the agenda format, the minutes, and then I'm going to hold out the financial report?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Congress...
You got it, you got it.
I haven't said I was running.
You've got a promotion.
The financial report, the only thing I want to call out is on our capital improvement project tracking reports. We have listed there ADA parking at Central Park, last-minute budget changes. We added also $40,000 for Park Row, and the title on that needs to change, and the $20,000 needs to reflect the $60,000. So that was, I'd make a motion that we accept the treasurer's report with that change needed.
Second.
Alvin Taylor.
Aye. I had just made note myself when I read your, the weekly report, and I heard reference to the other two spots. I wanted to make sure we hadn't forgotten about the other two, so that's great. Thank you, Paul.
All right. Unfinished business, the contract award for Harbor Railroad Area Conceptual Master Plan.
Sorry, let me get to it.
You got it.
Okay, so in your packet, I created just a, just a backstory for just what we had from the last council meeting. We approved up to $85,000 and some changes. And so I created a table to kind of show you the reflection. I took that back to the Berkeley Group. They made their adjustments and then submitted it back to us, and it came to $126,000 to accomplish all the things that we added. Well, we knew that that was too much. So we went back and talked to them again and said, "Can you somehow reduce this so that you're still accomplishing what we're looking for, but you can see the areas of where they do reduce?" So for example, in the task section 1.6, that's the economic profile and the comparables, where they go and look at other cities and analyze a bunch of details when it comes to their economics and tourism and all the details. They were going to look at six different localities. Well, after thinking through that, it's like, is that really necessary? And they came back and said, "No, it's just a standard that they use." And because what would happen is they would come back to you and say, "We've considered these six," and then we would talk about it and go, "No, that's not really one of us. Don't use Virginia Beach, for example." We would probably help consider, what are the most, what are the three that is most like us, and then use that. So we would save a ton of time on their end on our end too. So that's why it came back as three. That's a lot of money savings because of the amount of research and data that they would have to pull through. So that's a significant cost reduction. You can see that is, it went from $15,000 to $7,500. So that's, you know, we cut back there. And then another one was, they're going to, they're going to have the, they, they, the in-person kickoff steering committee is now going to be on the same day as when they do their public, their first public meeting. So instead of having it two days, it's going to save them money, say, and then they're just going to put more in one day. That, that saved also a significant amount of money. And then on the last, when they are ready to do their public engagement of what the final project is, what we had asked them earlier was to do it in two days, each time they do something, do two visits, two, two meetings. Well, the last one, they said, "Well, that doesn't make much sense. If it's a final project, we just need to have one meeting and invite the public to this one meeting instead of doing two meetings because we're not collecting feedback anymore, we're presenting now what it is." So that's where their other savings was. So that's where we're able to cut off significant monies, so that's, that's where we are right there.
So you're just saying that to present what we're going to do, we're just going to do it one time to the community?
Correct.
Will they have had another time of which we presented it?
Kickoff.
Yeah, they're going to have three different times.
Right, but the kickoff is just a kickoff to what we're going to do, it's not results of anything?
No, but they have public engagements, steps.
There's going to be multiple times that the public will participate in all of these meetings, including in the steering committee. The public can sit in the steering committee meeting too.
Sure.
So they'll have plenty of opportunities to be heard, but when they're, when they're ready to present the final, you know, plan, that's when they're going to do it one time.
All right, because there's going to be no public input, though.
Right.
It is going to be what it is, so.
Yeah.
And that'll be also televised, so people can, if they can't be here, they can watch it from wherever they are.
If it's done here.
I think maybe we could do a second one if we be...
It's going to jack right up.
It seems to me like that's the real meat of it. At the end of the day, that we're going to want to make sure the message is being communicated, that everyone's seeing from the same sheet of music and hearing the same thing.
Are you saying we can do it ourselves without having them to do it? Okay, I'm...
I think we could, we could do that if we did.
If it's the final, I mean, it's the third engagement is what we're talking about, happening one time.
With them, that we pay for.
I mean, there's going to be so many opportunities for input up until that point. I don't think that's the point to say, "Why don't we move the concrete plant to the other side of the harbor?" I think at that point, we pretty much have a plan, and it's the result of a lot of hours on everybody's part getting there. I did have a question about the language, though, and it, just in terms of the way it's written out here, for the first engagement, it says in 1.6 that, or 1.7, Berkeley will facilitate up to one public engagement event that occurs on two days? I just think that's kind of confusing because it's two events, then.
It would be two events.
And for the second event, it doesn't use that language. It says, "Public engagement event number two will facilitate a public engagement event that occurs on two days."
It could have been an oversight when they...
When they made the change.
Yeah, because I went through everything, and that might have been an oversight because they said it was going to be one day.
So, I mean, it seems clearly their intent, but we might want to just make a note of that in the first one.
Okay. So just to help bring a little bit of more clarity too, when, when Katie first presented Scope 1, Scope 1 was really the analysis that was going to take just to look at the railroad property for us to, as we're considering, should we purchase this or not? So they were going to do a lot of extensive research. Scope 2 was the master plan of both the harbor and the railroad, but focusing mainly on the railroad for how we're going to do the zoning and things like that. They're going to do all of it, but they're focusing mainly on that. When they went back to that, they said, "There's components of the first one that has to go into the second one." So that's why it did adjust a little bit higher. It wasn't that we were just cutting this off. It's kind of like they can't do the second one without some of the things that they had planned in the first one. So that's why it did adjust more.
Well, I think most of work order one was pulled in except the marketing analysis, right? But I still have trouble with the technical assessment and mapping in the economic profile, and it sounds all nice to have, but, you know, why do I need a topo map for the area? Why do I need aerials? Why do I need, you know, a bunch of this stuff? And on the economic profiles, I'm not sure what we're going to achieve even by comparing to three other localities. What do you expect to come out of that? Just ideas that this is what we could zone into our particular area?
Correct. They're going to look and show you things that are happening, that are comparable with us, that, so we can be, should be considering those things. Like, that's why they're the experts, they're going to, and it's a, a group that they're working with, that that's what they specialize in. So if, we're paying them to help us understand a big lofty view to say, "Okay, we've never seen it here," and it's hard for us to think out of the box. But they're going to look extensively into other comparables to say, "Here's what we're seeing, the trends happening across the board because of circumstances." And they're going to come back with suggestions of, "We think that this would complement very well with you." So that's why it's necessary. I ask the same question, like, why is all that, is it, I mean, that's, that's thousands of dollars worth of research.
What I don't want creeping into this is, is work that will help decide whether we buy it or not. This is the master plan that we're going after. Regardless of who owns it, this is what we want to envision being put in our master plan. And that's what I, just trying to prevent creep, let's say.
Do you think that sounds like, I mean, I'm just curious what you've thought on it?
Yeah, I can't, other than what's in the paragraph, I can understand if ideas come out of one, it's going to cost 10 grand or whatever it costs for that step to get some ideas. Is it worth 10 grand? I can't, I can't say one way to go.
And then take note that they pull all these things off, and if you look in the fees for the optional services, this is where this would come in. If we come back and say, "Oh, now we're going to need some more deeper assessments about the railroad property so that we can..." I mean, it's $15,000 for a market assessment.
Right, and that was in work order one.
That was.
I don't think, I don't think we need a market assessment.
No.
I think our market is doing just fine.
And then the facilitated discussions with council and those things, they, it's $17,000. It's a lot.
Yeah.
Help me, we, we were tracking for a grant. Can you update us on how that lines up with this?
Yeah, so because the way this was originally brought to you, there was a timeline of urgency to get these things happening, we missed it because it's taken a lot longer in our negotiations. We missed the first round. It's a rolling grant, my understanding is we will apply for the next round.
Is this the CDBG?
Correct. What, what will be required in that is all the things that Katie had mentioned about the committees that will be part of that, the steering committee, of specific people that we've been talking about. Some people have been contacted, some have not, because we were trying to get this thing going. We have plenty of time, we will continue to go back, but we were waiting for this to get resolved before we reached out and formed that committee.
And then grant will help us pay for what?
A lot of this.
A lot of this.
A lot of this.
Yes.
So if we don't get the grant go, we have to pay for all of this, $100,000 is what we're looking at.
And can you, I'm a little confused about the CDBG because I thought that's why we were rushing through and make, is that right? What, what happened as far as like, I thought we were on track with that deadline, and when is this next opening? I'm just trying to get a big picture feel, right?
I'll have to talk to Katie about when the next round is. My understanding is that you've got to have all these things approved and formed before you can do it, but we're not approved on this. So we're, put the cart before the horse. We were trying to go after it, we just didn't make it. Also what the cost of this will be to the next steps of this. So they're going to create a master plan, and then there's additional planning documents that we would have to do to start forming the guidelines. That's a whole nother section that we would do, and that would be building the cost for the next plans that would be in play for that. So there's a lot more steps to go, and they would be helping us find grants for this.
Well, one of those steps would be updating our ordinance, whatever comes out of the master plan, whatever portions required of the ordinance update, that's what we, we park the requirements. That would be the next step, at least one of the next steps.
I guess I'm struggling with the approval of this without, with the real vague unknown of when the CDBG, the next round is. You know, I don't want to hold things up, but I...
I want to say it's probably going to be in January because it's, it's revolving.
Right.
It comes up quarterly or something like that. So we missed the first one, we'll hit, we can hit the next one, is what I was looking for.
So long as we've approved of this.
Yeah, we have to have something to go for to say, it's like, you have terms like shovel-ready. If you're not ready for this, then you can't apply. You've got to meet their criteria, and so this would be the criteria.
So this would be one, obviously the committee wasn't formed would be two. What else are we missing?
I think those are the two things to be, to be ready.
I feel like I would like to hear some of this from Katie. And that's, that's just me. If there's anything else that we need to hear from Katie on this, is...
Do you want to push this to the next meeting?
Or October 2nd, can we, is October 2nd just a work session?
It is.
Can we make it a special meeting?
No, it's a regular meeting and executive session, I thought. Work session?
Work session, but we can make a special meeting, right, to vote on something?
I mean, if others disagree and want to move forward with it this evening, I would support that, but I just, I feel like she was really very detailed in the presentation, and not to, you know, disparage your presentation, but I just feel like that would kind of close the loop for me a little bit better to have her here.
I just wouldn't want to miss the timeline again. That's my only concern with that, because if we do push it down the road to October, we approve it then, then we've got to put everything together. It depends, we don't even know when it is, so.
Well, that's, yeah.
I guess the later that it is, it's, I guess if we knew that, that would be even better. If it's January, fine. If it's December, we may be running into another problem.
Is this, is this considered a planning grant?
But I don't think we ever intended...
So it says, I'm sorry, it says, "Applications are accepted on an open rolling basis from May 10th to November 15th."
We have, we have a budget item for $95,000. It doesn't talk about grants, it's, we budgeted $95,000.
Right, yeah, this, I don't think that doing this was dependent on us getting it funded by a grant.
That's correct.
It's much like the beachfront where we paid a consultant to kind of map out a plan, and then we would get, we would apply for grants to take that to the next step with the detail and everything.
Right, that's why I'm confused because if you're saying that we need to get this, put this into place to then get a grant... to pay for this that we've already.
No, to pay for, I mean, this is, these are broad strokes, what happens in these levels of consulting.
Right.
But it was like we had to have that committee put together to even qualify to apply for the grant.
Right.
So it wasn't like we're putting this.
So basically tonight, we're approving 14,000 over budget.
Well, and that's one of the questions I raised to Rick is where is this extra money coming from? We have 95 in our budget.
So I spoke to Katie about it today and 95,000 was approved. She reminded me that we did not use the 95,000 from last year. So it was, you know, put back in the fund balance, but could be re-appropriate if we need it. We haven't fund balanced, it's just put back. However, because it's, you know, 14, 15,000 above what this is, she has other contingencies in her planning budget that she can move around in order to get this. So she's not concerned with it. She's fairly confident that she has it already.
Typically, we've come to these meetings understanding what budget movement is necessary at this point. We have other items here on tonight's agenda that does that.
Right.
This one doesn't speak to where is the money coming from, such that when we approve this.
Okay, so I asked her about that and this is what her response was. When we approve this, we're not writing a check for $95,000 to them. This is based on as they do work, then they we send them, you know, the funds as they do work. This will go for months. By the time if we do, if she comes back to us, then she would, we would do a mid-year budget so that we can put it in the appropriate account to be able to show it. Or else next time when she's back, be able to show exactly which account that she's going to be moving it from this in order to satisfy that.
All right, so for me, if we were, if we were to approve this tonight, I would approve it with the understanding that we max out at 95 and don't pay anything beyond until we amend the budget according to.
Is that a motion?
No, I'm just.
Because I would, I would second that.
We were talking about the move this to another meeting, but.
That way we can get this part of it done. And that part of it is then we can move on to the committee. And then in our next regular October meeting, we can talk about the additional.
But they're still signing the contract for 109.
Right.
So that's kind of, I don't know how you get around that.
Well, insert a clause in the contract that's 95 half until amended.
What's, why wouldn't we just wait?
Well, you could wait or wait.
Two weeks, two weeks till our next meeting, right?
Can just do a special meeting?
Throughout, Timmy, some of the applications.
November 15th is what is a rolling. It's that's just what's online. I mean, you know.
So it opens November 15th?
No, it's it's rolling.
Oh, so then we don't have till January.
I didn't see anything about January.
No, no, no.
I always, I have a suggestion.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I just knew it's rolling.
But the next meeting would be October 2nd or 3rd and then we would have to call a special meeting for that work session.
Gives them 40 days to get it.
Right, that seems a little tight. I've got a.
Forty days to the max application date.
Right, I think we should then move with Paul's suggestion.
Approve it with an addendum.
As long as, but we don't know if they'll take it with the addendum. They probably won't take it with the addendum. I wouldn't if it was my business.
Oh, the contract?
Just saying.
All right, but you can, you can authorize a contract through whatever step that equals 95,000, right? They're going to march through steps one through whatever.
Right, and step three will be funded.
Right now, you can cut it off in your contract initially and we can amend the contract to add the funds and continue to the to the end.
I just think we're doing what if scenarios again. And even if we approve that now, we may be right back in our October meeting talking about another contract. That's the only way I'm looking at it.
I just want to say this. I I know this was Katie leading it. Katie has spent hours and I've sat in two meetings with them to make sure that we're trying to do the contract. That would be fair, you know, because it's like we we're trying to get the best contract we that's for us. They're also, I felt like accommodating like crazy in order to try to get us a contract that we can work with. I don't know if we're going, if they're going to come back and say, yes, we're going to work with you like that with, you know, only approving 95. I just don't think so. They were, they were like, okay, this is, this is it. I know Katie was here, she'd be fighting to say, I'm going to, I'll bring back to show you where the the adjustments are going to come from.
Well, that I think that's all the we were asking for. If she was going to be fighting for it, we just need to know what that is. And we would approve it tonight if we knew what that was, if, I mean.
Where's the other 15?
Where's the other 15 coming from?
I I don't know. I can't give that to, I just went out, she's, she's sick right now, so that's why she's not here. But her response to me was, I have it, I can move things around. I mean, I know Mary in Seaford.
Hi, I'm Mary in Seaford.
Come on up.
Here, no, no.
Now to the microphone.
Oh, I was not here. It's so much.
It's okay, well, we're kind, we're not going to.
Don't be nice to me, I'll cry. I, we need to have a line item for you all to approve an expenditure.
Right.
We have, and I, and I'm not prepared to tell you what line item contingency fund that Katie was thinking. I just don't know. I know we have contingency line items and we've been using them, but we need a line item to go with the 109.
Even if it was to come out of reserves, right? We still need to address the to and fro's.
Yeah, exactly. And we need to do that before instead of after like we're doing tonight.
Okay, so we couldn't say tonight, let's just take it out of reserves and then.
And you guys figure out what line?
And then you guys figure it out and tell us next meeting.
You can make a motion to that effect, yes.
Okay.
Which gives the treasurer a directive to move money to where it needs.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
I like that. Okay, so I move that we.
15,000 in the reserve.
15 million, okay.
I move that we we come up with a shortfall for this contract beyond the 95,000 that's already in the budget from reserves and then find out where those pieces would come from later. But for now, the reserve sounds great.
I'll second that. Is there any more discussion on that?
Thank you, Marion.
Yes, very much.
Not hearing any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moving on to the main part of it. So now that we've got the extra 15 or was that for the full motion on the 109?
Yeah, I think that was the long time, just where the monies would come from.
Excellent, all right.
And I will make sure that doesn't happen again.
Yes. Thank you. Now you know.
All right, budget adjustment for the temporary downtown restrooms. Boy, this seems to be a lot of adjustments.
You got interim town hall?
Town hall.
Town hall next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Interim town hall.
Yeah, so as you can see, I had Adrian prepare this. Adrian had, you know, kind of give you the background. The item specific is the proposed budget amendment reduces the 3.25 million budgeted for a new town hall by 162,091 to 3,087,981 and allocates as follows. So on the, on the backside, you can see the, he's created line items so that you can see how we're breaking.
That's perfect. That's.
That's what we want.
What we want.
That's what we're talking about.
So we knew that. This is how we broke it out so that we can track this now.
Yes.
And he had specifically asked me because he wants to make sure that you guys get what you want. Do you want specifics when we give how we're tracking things, a spreadsheet that you can see as we're doing things for the new, the interim town hall and the new town hall and the lease, you know, so it's broken out specific?
Right, the these items, all three now should appear in our project tracking system as well as in our, obviously.
Budget.
Report, budget report.
Okay.
Right, so now I can track how the lease payments are going.
Yeah.
How I can track then the moving expenses with separate line items in our project tracking.
Okay. All right, that's clear. So that that has accomplished what he's, he's, he's giving you what you've wanted.
Yes.
Okay.
And is that our intent going forward that everything will be pulled from that budget line down to the interim town hall budget line so that we're essentially reducing our new town hall construction budget, right? With every month that goes by that we're.
Which which will eventually have to address if it comes in estimated over three points, whatever.
But that is the funding source, is that that budget line, right?
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
That's where our engineering cost should be going against right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed budget amendment as presented in our staff report.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries unanimously. All right, now we'll get to the temporary downtown restroom.
Okay, so in the same way, Adrian created a better way to track this as well so we can see where this is coming from. So he's proposing the amendment created a new expense line in the capital fund for the purchase of the restrooms, the amount of 70,000. This covers the project, the projected costs, minor unforeseen expenses. We don't know certain hookups we may have to have or whatever to fund 70,000 appropriation. 67 is from the Main Street grant to be appropriated and 3,000 is just a transfer from the general fund contingency. So if you turn on the back, you'll see the spreadsheet of how we.
I don't see that on.
The spreadsheet is is above.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you.
So I have a question. The 67,000 grant from Cape Charles and from Main Street is new. We, when we created this budget for this, we didn't intend that we were going to be getting 67,000 from from Main Street. Is that correct?
I can't confirm that. This was before me.
For the temporary bathroom?
No, for the temporary bathroom, it's since, that's what you've done.
Yes, that's what I've done, yeah.
The 67 came originally from the bathroom over by the train, the visitor's center bathroom. It was a part of a, an infrastructure grant from the county that's been carried over since 2022 toward when we could actually get going. I I feel like I need to share, though, there is some hesitation on the county's part of funding yet another temporary bathroom.
Exactly, that's what my concern was.
Because they funded the silver bullet, which is fine. And you know, everybody gives that kind of a bad rap. It's six years old. It was a temporary bathroom. It's six years is a lot for a temporary bathroom. So I don't want to throw things, you know, off too much, but I have, I'm going to be setting up a meeting with Rick and John Coker and Charlie and Karen and myself because I've been kind of, I was involved from the very beginning from that to see if we can allocate that money toward the temporary. And if not, can that money be reallocated toward like Bloxham Station if that's what the visitor's center, you know, if that ends up being that? So we're just trying to figure out. Karen did what she was supposed to do. She submitted for the change to happen and there was some hesitation. There, most of the committee voted yes, but there was some hesitation in moving forward, so.
I guess I don't understand because we're still talking about this as being temporary and I thought we were all systems go on a permanent solution very quickly. So I, I don't know why we want to redirect 67,000 to a temporary and not use it for a permanent solution.
Because if we wanted it to go to the permanent, there would be no problem.
Right, so why aren't we doing that?
That's, that hesitation is.
That's correct.
The hesitation is specifically the, fund yet another temporary.
Was about, is about to essentially expire is what I've been told, right?
Well, it's 2022 is when it expired, but we've carried it forward and they've just been good, understanding that it wasn't our fault that the bid went from 695,000 to 2.1 million.
Right.
You know, who, who'd have thunk? So they've just been working with us on that, but.
So I, where are, I guess for me, it begs the question, where are we on the permanent solution? Because I would much rather say, let's use it for the permanent solution as as intended than than spend it on a temporary solution that we we plan. I mean, I would imagine the county would be a little upset if we use their 67,000 on a temporary solution that we use for, let's just say, nine months. And then we turn around and sell that same temporary solution, which is what we've been talking about doing, correct?
That's one of the options.
That was one of them.
We've said also move it down to the beach, move it to Central Park.
Right.
You know, it was flexible or sell it.
But bottom line is the the county committee, the north, the infrastructure committee has expressed great concern in in funding yet another temporary solution. They're supportive of the full, full solution.
As am I.
Didn't we already make a budget amendment to purchase the restroom?
I don't know if the budget amendment came, that's what I was going to ask Rick. When you had come with your different options and we selected the particular option we were going, I'm not sure we followed through with a budget amendment. And to me, that's what this is. And if we're hanging our hat on this Cape Charles, Main Street, that's not a real item.
But we approved him going forward with the purchase, but that wasn't a budget amendment.
That's correct.
Yes, so I, it's the, the new wrench in this is the 67,000 from Main Street, which I, I don't think we should apply to a temporary solution. So I don't know how that got legs without.
I guess the other question would be, are they going to let us keep rolling this grant down the road?
And how far? And how far down the road? I mean, there, there could be a real loss, risk of loss. Because the, the reason it's 67, just to explain, I believe it was. I might not have this accurate. I think it was 100 grand to begin with. It might have been 125. And a part of that was used for the plans that were developed for the visitor's center bathroom. The architectural plans was spent for that permanent structure.
But in our discussions here at this group when we approved the temporary was that we were saying we are aggressively going for the permanent. And we just, maybe we haven't gotten an update on that, which is fine, although I think Bob Panik's working on that. So I would rather, so I guess my point here is it doesn't look like the 67 is not going to get spent soon. We're hoping to spend it soon and that was certainly what we all agreed to. And I'd rather sit and and use it for that.
Well, if we decide to lease something, that 67, they're not going to move 67,000 towards leasing something.
Is it even our money? Like, isn't it their funds?
Who said?
Main Street.
No, it's, it is. They did on behalf, I mean, Main Street applied for it because of the fulfilling the needs of the the business community and needing the commercial district bathrooms. So they applied for the grant, but.
So either way, though, we've already ordered the restroom trailer, correct? Like, have we given them a deposit? So that's happening. So whether this gets credited in our favor and we get to, you know, reduce our costs or not, it remains to be seen based on what they decide. But I guess we just need to make sure we're pushing forward on our permanent solutions as a good faith. So they see, hey, if you don't want to do it, just give us a little bit more time to put it over here if that's what you're more comfortable with.
And the committee is very supportive of both town and Cape Charles projects, Main Street, all of that. And so I don't think there'll be a problem in the 67,000 in some way being supported toward a main, a Cape Charles project. But there is no guarantee.
I'm just not comfortable with us asking it to be shifted to the temporary bathroom. That's what I, that's.
Well, that's what I just said, is that, yeah.
I don't even know why we're going to ask them to move that as a group.
No, we wouldn't. I, what I was saying is that if we aren't, if we've already asked them to move it and there has been a vote that says not in 100% of that, so it is at a standstill. It is not approved to be moved for this case. So us going back to say we don't want, then that's not a problem.
Why have we asked them to move it? Who, who?
To use the money so we don't.
I, oh, I'm sorry, not why, why is the wrong question? What prompted us to do that? I don't recall us agreeing this to that.
There's a timeline that they were going to lose the grant altogether. And so instead of losing it, they wanted to reappropriate it for the temporary use.
Just to get the bathrooms, I think. It's just, it's a grant bathroom. They were just looking at, okay, we can finally use this toward bathrooms. There wasn't a big thought process of, you know, instead of, it's just that it's three years old at this point.
Right, the only alternative we have is to take out the revenue from the grant and insert revenue from reserves.
Right.
But we already, didn't we already do that?
We didn't make the, we didn't make the, we voted, we wanted to do it, but we didn't do the.
We shouldn't have voted on the budget at the time we selected.
We voted on a dollar amount to authorize Rick, right? But not as a budget, not where it would come from.
Which is, we just said we didn't want to do that with this contract.
Well, that doesn't apply to us.
So if you want an update on the long term?
No, I prefer, let's settle this. What's the preference, reserves or do we have a problem? What's the preference, reserves or do we have a problem with the Main Street grant?
Well, what was the longevity of the permanent one? Because we had talked about putting it right next to where the temporary was going with one of the prefab.
Yeah, we, we looked at several options. Uh, we looked at building our own based on, Bob has actually gone back to the contractor, the engineering firm that designed the first one that ended up being one point three million to re-scope it down just for bathrooms. So it still looks like a, um, the same rail car, so it's got that, or train station feel. We've got that back and then they're going to be doing the, you know, the more details. Uh, so we're waiting on that, that's, that's in play. We've got the prefab version, so we would know, or modular kinds, we know the cost of that one. And then the other options were the lease options. And so both of places that we've contacted have not turned anything back to me, they're still working on. I spoke to one of them yesterday and they are still hoping to get it done soon, their engineers are working on it.
The grant will not be, whoever said that earlier, for a lease?
No. I mean, I would recommend that we pull out the, the Cape Charles Main Street revenue line there. And move forward with recommendation from Rick Marion on where we, we, where that money will be allocated from.
Well, it's going to come from reserves, we can say that right now.
So the same motion as last night, make the motion just where the money's coming from.
Because we already have our budget done, so can't pull out the thin air.
All right, so let me, let me make a motion here that we approve this budget amendment as presented in the staff report and change the revenue line item for grant Cape Charles Main Street to our fund reserve.
I second that.
Any more discussion?
I think the last time we had this conversation about, this only has the cost of what we purchased and I feel like if we're making a budget amendment now, formally, we said we could do that later to think about the fact that we need to put some signage on it, landscape it, make sure it's accessible. I don't know if we're going to need more sidewalks and, and we were going to rely on staff or somebody to kind of make those determinations, but are you still saying we do that later or?
Expressionary fund, as far as that goes for those little, because those are going to be small.
I mean, hopefully it's, you know, five thousand dollars, I don't know.
I'm saying I think that's something you can approve without council, correct?
Okay.
Well, yeah, we have contingency in, in our capital projects.
Right.
Right.
Perfect.
So we have a second.
Yeah, but wouldn't that, that number wouldn't be sixty-seven, it'd be whatever the.
Well, we've got down here seventy.
We already have the three.
Yeah, seventy.
But they're only reallocating this, so.
Yep, so hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
And again, this needs to be included on our project tracking list, right, as a, as a capital project.
All right, Rotary membership for town manager.
And mayor.
And you?
Well, I already am, so.
Oh, yeah.
So, this is one of the, the, one of the things that John, Jose and I talked about. It just was, he said it will be built into the budget instead of on the contract and, um, somehow it got, it's fallen through the cracks. And so I just wanted to bring it back. I've been a Rotary member for the last two other places that I'm at. It's a great thing, I know you're part of it and Katie's part of it as well, but, um, I think it's a really good thing. I, I did some research, I kind of gave some details of like why it's important, but it's a good way for us to stay involved, connected with them, it's philanthropy. And a lot of the members that are on Rotary are also part of our board members and many of our boards. So it's a great way for us to continue to give back and show that we're involved in the community. Um, I've attended multiple meetings already and so, uh, and it's, it's very affordable. So I would, I gave a budget line item on here where this comes from.
And to this.
Let me just add, I don't even think you need to bring this to council.
I don't think so either.
You had a budget for membership and do, you use it for this, if you want it, we can, we can approve it and I'll make a motion that we approve, you know, the town manager joining Rotary and use the account information shown in the staff report.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. But I think Paul's point is a good one, that this should just be in your regular budget for memberships and if you need that to be increased for the next year to cover this plus, you know, something else that you had planned on going to, then we will preset that.
I'll have to come back because I wanted to go to the other trainings.
Right, but well, you know, and I don't think this needs, like, these types of things should definitely be at your discretion. From a, we want to support your professional development and memberships to things.
But you should have separate training monies available for your departments.
We reduced a lot of our training.
Yeah, we reduced it, but we reduced it with the agreement that we would be very willing to put more in.
Some of us. Some of us.
So I'm assuming Dee, we're going to read our packets, is that, or are you prepared on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and that was to update the delinquent B poll account and collection effort with Katie being out. Till this evening, we will move on.
No, no, Mary.
That's, that's Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say what a great report, what a great report it was, I'm so impressed.
I apologize.
Yeah.
I carried my little brown bag of red notices that were laminated and looked really sharp and I went into different businesses and said, you know, we're at this point now and first they were happy to see me and then I pulled my little red notice out of the bag and they were terrified. So they wanted to comply, there's varying degrees of, um, ability to keep good business records, but I think that we made, um, we made a good attempt. I think there was a buzz on Mason Avenue about it happening and everybody, according to the list, made good efforts, some still need a little extra help. But it's just a starting point, there's a lot of these on our, our rolls unfortunately and I think a lot of them are, they didn't deactivate their accounts. But that means that they still have to true up if they went out of business and I don't know how much revenue we'll see from that occurring actually. I really have no idea when they went out of business, but we're going to keep after it and keep breaking it into geographical and different types of businesses and just do it well.
So these were mainly Mason Avenue all businesses?
But there's others that are off of Mason Avenue still? There are, about how many more, Marion?
I, I'm sorry, I can't.
That's okay, I can't give you the exact number. That's all right.
My, my first thought was four hundred and thirty-nine.
That have not paid?
Yeah, that are, that have, or may be non-existent. I don't, I went through the list several months ago and it was a lot.
That is a lot.
Any way we can get a copy of this?
Yeah, because we could probably help with some of that, like as far as guiding you.
Yes, I, I want to.
I mean, truly, like there's, there's a four hundred and thirty-nine, I mean, I'm sure there's a way.
I know where it came to my head except for, that was a pretty specific number.
Yeah. But I mean, we could probably assist in that.
And go through and see if we recognize any of them.
Just historically, there's enough of us here that have some pretty, I'm happy to help.
Maybe we do a work session and work through it?
I'll bring you a list so everybody can tell me what they know.
How far back did you go with the delinquencies?
Two years.
A lot of those could be even just landscape contractors who went and got a license so they could do one project and then they haven't been back since.
Exactly, but we might be able to at least identify that for you.
Are there STRs on that list?
Um, no, there were not.
And that's something where we said, we were going to shut down STRs if they didn't comply right away. I don't think there should be a distinction between one business versus another.
No, and our code says you do it this way or this is what happens and we really have been more than patient. We're talking so many extra hours that we stayed open and.
Yeah.
You know, Smitty's, Smitty's ceremony and we set up a table there. We've really been encouraging and sent out some letters. And then the next step is, um, you know, it's a misdemeanor and there's heavy fines and we don't want to get to that point. I think that our goal is to make sure everyone's compliant and to gather the revenue that's owed the town, period. So we're going to be helpful to a certain point and then we're going to put the red signs in.
So what to, what's the next step for some of these, like, two businesses were unable to comply with the request to furnish gross receipts?
One of those today did comply. And while we didn't check their records against their books, I feel that it was a good attempt. The other ones, we're going to give them personal assistance, we're not going to go down and sit with that business owner and work through it.
That's a good way to do it, yeah. Thank you.
Well, absolutely, I mean, we appreciate our businesses here very, very much and I just don't think it's fair for one business to sit here and pay and the other one right next door not to.
No, not at all.
It's not the way our business is driven, that's not the way it's going to be, so.
In agreement.
And me too.
Is there something in the code that says if you're not current, you can't apply for a business license?
Or a different business or?
Or I guess, so being current is applying for a business license, is that the case? Okay, so that's why, so they're just haven't even gotten their business license for whatever year it is.
Right, for twenty twenty-five, right.
Or past years.
So that in itself, they should not be able to operate.
Right, they shouldn't.
And we're in, you know, September.
Right.
That's right.
Right, because one of the businesses I know for a fact, um, was delinquent, let's say four years ago and left town with a big old balance that they owed. Maybe we should talk privately, but I, that bothers me a great deal that they're back in business, but they never were out of business. They just weren't in act, they weren't in business in town.
That's illegal and simply not fair.
Not fair. And, and it was a large amount that they walked, that they walked away from.
No, the truing out process is an awkward process and it's dependent upon the business to come forward.
Yeah.
We could seek them out in our spare time, but we might find a couple of them here. There's not a lot of spare time in my office.
Yes, exactly. Well, I think, personally, I thought it was an incredible.
Yeah, thank you.
Update and incredible effort.
Oh, I'm glad to do it, I love our business. And I know that you all do as well, so. Okay, any other questions?
Oh, what, as I said, what's the next step?
The next step is to put the red.
Well, that's for these twelve, but then saying the balance of your list, is there something family you can work with her on?
Yeah, I'm happy to help in any way, yeah, and between Andy and I, we would be.
Yeah, I came here and there was five of them, so I can pretty much know most.
We have a pretty good history in our brain.
So a lot of these aren't just the Mason Avenue, aren't, aren't brick and mortar on Mason and that makes it a little bit different, but people will know, more so than I and I'd love to have that information.
Just to understand, you put the red notice in the window, does that mean the door has to be locked?
No, it just means that they have this red notice that's an embarrassment to know and the customers see it when they come in.
And potentially they'll lose business, because people will not, they'll turn around.
Oh, that's, I, I was excited to see that because that's, that's really, number one, it's to your neighbors it says, but to your, you know, why should you continue to be able to make money when the other folks are?
They just take it down, then it's illegal. So then we can come in and lock the doors.
It's a misdemeanor.
Yeah, then we, I don't, I'm not, I don't see a step that says we can lock the doors. We would put a summons out, a misdemeanor summons and then, what do you say, Jake, you ready? Let's go get some businesses.
But it looks like, Marion, you've gotten to a place where that might not have to happen.
No, I, I think that it accomplished a goal by setting the buzz on Mason.
Right, which is great, a much better way for us to achieve this same result, I think, so thank you.
I don't get how a business cannot run without having gross receipts. How, how do they do their taxes? How do they pay their state taxes?
Well, that would be the next person too.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of, that's kind of scary.
And that's a little scarier than Cape Charles.
Well, I just know how many businesses that are struggling to do it right and work so hard to get it right, that is just not fair.
Well, my experience as a former economic developer who specialized in small businesses is if they're struggling with this part, then maybe we want to consider a mentorship, you know, with other successful businesses who can teach them this. I mean, our goal is to make sure they comply.
Yeah.
And, and do it fairly, but if we can assist.
Oh, absolutely.
Mentors in their business to help them with that.
And this is something really, if you speak with Karen and Main Street in their economic vitality division of things, if you kind of partner up with her and say, hey, I'd like for the EV people to kind of take on a mentorship and offer that and I think that you would get some great success with. Well, we have our EV chair, co-chair here, Mr. Ken Buddha.
Well, I like that.
So I'm speaking for him, but. I just like how he's today. He said he was going to stay away from me, but darn. Yeah, but if it's, I mean, that's, that is exactly, you know, part of the mission.
So the next step is that I'm going to come to you with a, a list and we'll kind of go through who's on that list and then Councilman Buddha, you and I will sit down and we'll talk about how we can offer some mentorship for businesses.
Sounds good.
And then after that, it's misdemeanor.
And it's Mr. Pruitt.
We may need a paddy wagon.
That's the next one.
Thank you so much, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you so much.
Absolutely, we'll keep the initiative going now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
All right. Thank you, sweetie.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're on to town manager comments.
Yes, um, so just a few things just to keep you up, up to date on. I encourage you to go take a walk down the fishing pier. Uh, our team has done a lot of work and I feel very proud because, I mean, I was embarrassed the, the time when I walked down to see how bad it was and they have taken this project by the horns and replaced a lot of wood that was bad. Cracking, falling through or so beat down that it, and screws sticking up. So a lot of those boards have been replaced, but it looks really good. I've taken lots of pictures and I thought about including in the next weekly report so even the public can see the pictures, if not go down and walk themselves.
Have you been able to share that with Dave Gomer yet?
No.
I asked him earlier.
I would, I would do that, he's, he was very moved that you used his, as an example.
Yeah, he did, he actually thanked me, so. But, um, tomorrow we're going to walk down Taswell, uh, the overlook and do the same thing, flag certain boards and that's going to get fixed. Uh, and then Clayton has volunteered to help do some assessments on the pavilion. So then I'd like to do the same thing, we're going to walk and talk to the staff, show them what needs to be done and then on the civic center too. So Clayton has graciously volunteered to help, so thank you.
Thank you, Clayton.
So we, we have, we've had a lot of, our, our staff have just been ragtag staff this last week or two. Lots of sicknesses or personal issues going and so it's, it, it's been tough. So I've, I've felt it myself, it just overworked every day, every night. There's a lot going on, so thank you for your patience. Even trying to get my weekly report last week, I couldn't do it, I was slammed. So, um, but this, this week I combined it so you can, or this past week, you can see both weeks together.
Rick, while you're talking weekly report, can I throw out there, I, I, I'm wondering if it's a burden on you guys to have to write that much in a weekly report?
Too much detail.
Too much.
And, and it almost makes me think that maybe it is a time suck for everyone when they could be spending that time getting the work done that they want to get done. You know, so I would certainly be a champion for it to be condensed. I don't think we need that level of detail. I think it's great when there's something really important that needs to sort of be highlighted, but when there's that much detail in a fifteen-page report on a weekly basis, the important stuff kind of gets, um, you know, lost a little bit.
You take the example of each department saying, I've attended department meeting on Tuesday, you know, it's like, really?
The, the burden falls on me to have to go back and spend hours of condensing that. So it's difficult, I'm just telling you, it's difficult. I'm used to doing a report every two weeks.
Yeah.
And because, I mean, I would prefer that if you guys would be okay with that. It could be a fifteen page, but it's two weeks worth of showing what we're doing, but I can also seek to condense it more.
Yeah, two weeks of condensing.
Yes.
It really does, I spend the first two days working on it.
No.
And so it's, and it's not constant, you know, it's, there's lots of interruptions and meetings that go, but it's taken me two days to work through those reports, it's a lot of time.
Yeah, no.
I would champion the, your, your department heads being able to not feel as compelled to give us that much as well.
They would love this.
I don't think they need, you know, why, why burden, why burden them more than they already are.
But for example, for someone to say, we worked on the fishing pier, that's important. I went to another department head meeting is not important, you know, so take all those things out.
How many notaries were per? How many notaries were performed, I mean, the little stuff, I think, but I love the reported concern stuff being there because that does two things, it lets other people know that things have already been brought to someone's attention and they've seen it too.
Are there any other things that you would suggest changes? Okay, great, thank you. That's a huge burden, take it off.
I mean, if you give more work done.
Yeah, I, I feel it. Just personnel, just high level, we hired two new staff. And so Casey Quilter will start the twenty-second of September as the new inspector and compliance officer.
Oh.
So he has got lots of experience in construction and education, has a master's degree as well. So it's, uh, we're really excited, he was a standout candidate, everybody was immediately impressed. So he's going to be great for both planning zoning and code compliance. He will be in training to also add additional support for Jeb in inspections, so that's, that'll be great. The second is Karen Crum, she is the new library assistant and she starts on the thirtieth of September and she comes with four years of library experience and currently volunteers at Parsley Library and she's been assisting with programming there. So she is very excited to join our team and we're excited to have her. Another thing just to keep you aware, I remember when I was going through the interviews and when I spoke to the department heads, one of the things they asked me was, what's my thoughts on staff development and training? And I'm glad to know that you guys are very supportive of that because I think it's really important. There's a saying that I have, you pay to get the right person and you train to retain the people. So it's like, we always want the best people, so our staff do that. And so I wanted to give you some examples of that because I get, I feel proud of my staff that they really take it seriously, they, they, they really are. So for example, Connie Drummond, she has been taking classes through the Building Code College and just passed with flying colors, uh, first exams, furnaces and water heaters. So she's still working on her stuff and it's neat that she takes pride in that. Tracy Outland, she has been going through the Virginia Association Zoning Officials and she's been doing training in Richmond for zoning administrator training. Uh, Jack Steinmeier, he has been doing code, Building Code Academy and general core classes and this is the first of two classes that are prerequisites as he's sitting under the Virginia State Inspector License. So he's been doing that.
That's wonderful.
So it's neat to see that.
Absolutely.
Their, their, the depth of their team is doing it. Libby is, where's she at, there she is. Libby is teaching a Kirk's Essential Class for first-year clerks and she's a big dog in the clerk world.
She is a big dog.
And it is so neat to see that. When we did train you today, I mean, he even recognized you, so that was exciting to see that. Katie Nunez, she has taken some refresher courses and a general assembly update for planning, zoning and land use at the Library of Virginia Museum History and Culture Museum, so she's been doing that. Jody Outland attended the annual Public Sector Human Resource Association Virginia Chapter and that was in Wintergreen. And, uh, she's done extensive topics in legal and psychol, psychological safety and how to conduct investigations and ethics and she's going to be introducing some training uh, right after our normal staff, uh, department head trainings of like fifteen, twenty minutes just for our department heads to get a little bit more training of how to lead people and how to deal with issues and conflict resolutions, but just training for our, our staff. And, and I would like to do some more with, um, project management with some of our staff members of how to, you know, take a plan and then walk through, how do you, how do you start it, how do you analyze it and then what are steps in order to accomplish the action steps, so I'm going to be doing that. And I've been working a little bit with Ralph already on some of these projects. So I'm, I'm just excited, I think that's something for you guys to be aware of. For the community, we went through, um, council training today and we also opened the doors for many other municipals and so we had Eastville and Cherrider, uh, council members also show up today, so for you guys to know about that. I did send an email earlier today regarding, um, the Northeast Beach Tiger Beetle Regulations that our mayor's been working on and he'd like to send a letter. It's not a policy or anything, it's just a letter on behalf of town, I thought it'd be best as a representative, you know, you're, you're approving him to send that, so I just want to make sure you guys are okay with that. I sent that for you to read and, uh, oh, it looks like it's good, so, uh, if you need me to send it, I can send it, but you just let me know.
Go right ahead.
Okay.
You've got the letter, right?
Yep, I got everything. I just wanted to show the picture, I just, I love it. Tara and the group has been working so hard on the Cell Fest and what a, this is the, the actual logo that's going to be used for Cell Fest twenty twenty-six.
That's the artist who got one in competition. So it's, um, a local, an Eastern Shore artist won that and that's going to become a poster, a commemorative poster, but it's not the logo.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I am, this is another thing just for you to be aware of. Andy Dickinson has reached out to me about a park. There is a, a family that, um, has ties to the shore, especially Kate Charles, and they want to do a park and are willing to subsidize the, the funds for this. I have tried to get some time with them, we were supposed to meet this week, but because of the storm that was here earlier, it prevented them from coming. We're going to sit down and talk about it, but I will bring it back to you, it's, it's just, we're very preliminary. We don't know, I don't know the details of what they're looking at, I know they've sent some emails, but, um, stay tuned.
That's affiliated with the one that we talked about before?
Yeah, yeah. We've kind of talked around with, with Dicky Foster, yeah, that's it. However, I think they understand that we're, we don't want to use the name, but they're still interested in doing something, you know, as a, as a park. So stay tuned, I'll have more information, it's still very early. Uh, and then just some other updates, I know the last time we were here, you asked me, uh, some things. Demolition by neglect, you guys heard already because that was one of the things you asked for. You were concerned or had mentioned that there's lots of trash cans, um, needing to be cleaned or the tops and Clayton and I have also been walking around, work orders have been submitted. Uh, I don't know when it's going to happen, but the work orders are submitted.
Trash cans are also getting beat up with their, the, um.
Grabber.
Grabber, yeah, grabs it and all of a sudden it slices into the side, you know, so you may start hearing that. I know I've got that.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, personal, like our personal trash cans?
Yeah, just notice the side, the way they grab it sometimes is a little awkward and it slices into it.
I've, I've requested three additional trash cans for Mason to be placed in certain areas. Clayton and I also did a walk and just, there's areas where it's just, it's a long span without a trash can. I'm going to try to, um, add another one around the Brown Dog area.
Thank you.
It won't be beside it, but it may be across, but it'll be near enough where people could still, you know, they like to sit around and eat ice cream and then there's not a trash can or it's overflowing, so we're going to add another one in that area. So those have been submitted. There's a ton of cans, barriers, barricades all over town.
Yeah.
I have asked them to be removed, picked up, relocated.
Are the, can I just ask on that, are the park ones going to go away now?
I've requested those to be removed.
I've looked at them for, I've been patient for three months.
I walked around.
But it's my view.
This week I saw them too, I walked around and picked them up and stacked them up.
Yeah.
Because it was kind of getting out of hand. We put a work order for them to be removed.
Right.
And also the orange barricades are just sitting by the fence, we're going to remove those too.
That is my backyard, you know.
I know, I've seen it, so those are in, in the, you know, hopefully within the next week. I'm going to be out of town next week. Uh, I'll be in town somewhat, but I have my sister coming up and then we're going to go drive to see my dad.
Good.
So, West Virginia, but I will not be working.
Can I ask a question? When will we have an update on the Mason Avenue electrical upgrade? We were, we kind of put that into a holding pattern and we figured out what the full scope was going to be and the price and I know that the clock today, the clock stopped working because of the rain. So that kind of begs the question for when we might be able to get that, that upgrade moving forward.
Uh, I'm glad you asked that. Um, I, I, um, in my weekly report, it shows that I've spoke to Bob about it, I've spoken to him several times. Bob is very busy as well, it is on his list and he is going to be working on doing a new RFP and I will hopefully give you a new update of when that's going to be sent out and by our works, our next work session, October second, I'll give you an update.
Council members, anything?
I have, my question is another follow-up piece of some type of update on STR, like how many, um, applications isn't the right word, I'm sorry, I can't think of what they were called, was it an applica? Registration, is that what you said? Yeah, just like how many we got in and, uh, we never really got any, anything on that because we were so busy in the summer, you know.
Well, that was on our last agenda, wasn't it, and then it got pushed?
I believe so.
Like an STR update, sort of?
Yeah.
It still would be an early registration because they're not due till next year for the, for the new.
Yeah, but we never even got last year, which was the big push the first time. I'm just curious how that turned out and.
How the system.
How the system's working.
We'll have an update for the next.
Did we have violations, you know, like, you know, we did so much work on that. I think the public really, as well as us, want to know a little bit about that. We realize that everything's busy, so I'm not saying urgently, but I'd like to get that on the, on the agenda. Yeah, and then I just had two quick updates from ESVA Tourism Hat. I, I can't remember if I've ever mentioned this, that we are working on a new love sign down at the, um, Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel Welcome Center and we had artwork kind of submitted throughout the, the ESVA, so we're kind of getting to a point where we'll be narrowing down that a little bit and that will be built. It's in the budget for, for tourism to, to do that, so that'll be a nice addition. We also are working on, um, restrooms, my bathroom kind of thing, obsession carries to everything I do, not just here, for that welcome center in Malpha, so that, um, there is a place that's truly, will be kind of like a welcome center for people to stop and that there, the ADA bathrooms and, uh, those bathrooms are horrible there. So that building, if you don't know, is co-owned by the Chamber and ESVA Tourism Now. It was just owned by the Chamber and ESVA Tourism bought into that, so it's going to be a commitment to make that happen. And then I was a part of a, um, I was invited by the, um, the Eastern Shore Chamber to be a part of a rural healthcare, um, transformation, um, funds that the governor is working on. Um, and they're, the, the, some of the secretaries from his, um, division came to find out information of what are needs for rural locations like the ESVA and it was a roomful of people far more qualified than, than me, um, in any way, uh, in the healthcare system and what are the gaps and what are, and with some of the changes, what are we losing and missing out on and how will our residents be served in doing that? And so it was a great think tank, it's one of thirteen and we were at, the, um, ESVA was one of the first kind of in doing that, so it was just a two-hour kind of listening session on their part, but I went up last week, so I just wanted to share, I wanted to share.
Thank you. At one item, uh, beachfront master plan, at the last meeting, the work session, we had gotten material at the session and we didn't have any public involvement and at the end we said we were going to recommend a staff report that I expected in this agenda that basically said, here are the drawings and here's the grant, a copy of the grant and just provided for information only for the public to be able to comment on if they want that, the three minutes public comment. But we haven't given the public any time to look at it and say, here's, here's what it.
We talked about having printed copies that they could pick up.
We talked, we talked and it's in the meeting minutes from last time, but I don't think we were definitive enough to say we want a staff report.
Yeah.
And this is my recommendation, staff report with a copy of the drawings as well as the grant application. Remember that on our October meeting?
Yeah.
It would have to be a full, you know, regular meeting.
Correct. Correct. Uh, so you want the drawings, the drawings are in the packet here.
Yeah, okay, so people don't know that, you know, that we're at the work session.
It's hidden in, it's hidden in the minutes, kind of.
Now look at the meeting minutes that are attached in this package, okay? You're forcing people to go search.
Yeah.
And I'm saying, let's get front and center, have it a staff item, as a line item in the agenda. We don't need to discuss it, but it's available for people to, to look at.
The mention in the next meeting that it's available.
And then that's something we can have the Civic League make an announcement at their meeting to point it, point toward it so that they can know.
The staff report, very short and sweet, here's the attached drawings and here's the attached, um, grant application. That's it.
Sixteenth.
So our submitted meeting.
Before.
If we'd like to use that as a platform for any discussions, I'd try to, we'd get the information out by email.
Or you just let them know that it'll be on the sixteenth agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Just want to let folks know, I will be out of town at the next meeting, I'm on vacation.
That's right.
So I'll be out from the sixth through the twenty-first.
What's that?
And when do you go? Adam?
I will be out as well.
Same time, right?
Yes, so you guys better all make sure.
We're not vacationing.
This is when we get everything decided, you guys, right here. We wanted to make sure we knew, that's right.
Uh, you'll be running the sixteenth meeting. Well, actually, it'd be running the second work session and the sixteenth meeting, I will be out of both.
There you go.
All right, so a couple of other announcements, uh, this evening, October second, like we just mentioned, Town Council work session, uh, fourth and fifth, Doc Dogs, back again.
Who let the dogs out?
I will be here for the fifth, unfortunately, Theo will not be jumping on the fourth, I have a wedding. Uh, October thirteenth, Town Office is closed for Columbus Day, October sixteenth, Town Council regular meeting and October twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, Town Hall closed for move to the interim location. All volunteers, yeah.
Busy, yeah, working, I think we have professional moves coming.
All right, not hearing anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.